Notice of the Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 6, 2017, at 5:45 PM and at 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. We will begin with the executive session, discussion with legal counsel pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, on a matter which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the requirements of the Texas Public Information Act.
Should we move to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is everyone ready?
Ready?
Yes. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the City of Brownsville and we thank you for our form of government here. Specifically today, we thank you for our mayor and commissioners who have committed to serve the citizens of Brownsville. Lead and guide each of us and keep us close to your heart so that we can receive the best ideas for our city and individually, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Action on item discussed in executive session, discussion and possible action regarding entry into a proposed memorandum of understanding with Cameron County for the creation of a West Rail Trail.
I move to authorize City Attorney to extend an offer to Cameron County, Texas, to consent, operate, and maintain a bike and hike trail on the West Rail Quarter pursuant discussion executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Then, next item, mayor's activity update.
Actually, I don't have much of a update. I think I want to welcome everybody to the summertime. I'm kind of like looking forward to it. Hopefully, we'll get a little chance to spend some time with family and friends. I do want to welcome our newly constituted commission. I look forward to working with all of you. It's been a pleasure doing it for the last six years and I'm sure looking forward to the future, so thank you all for being here.
Commissioners' activity update.
I just want to, I have a few quick comments since it is summertime and if you do have little ones, make sure that you take advantage of all of the programs that our city offers. We have summer camps from our Gladys Porter Zoo to our children's museum. There are all kinds of resources from our Fine Arts Museum. The city has all kinds of resources for your children to keep them busy and active during the summer and to keep them, you know, busy and making sure that those creative juices are flowing. So, yes, so make sure that your kids are active and keep your pets cooled off because like today it was over 100 degrees, so it felt like it was 108. So, it's summertime, be ready, and have fun and enjoy. That's all.
I have something I'd like to thank city staff and there were many departments for a lovely Southmost Trail ribbon cutting last week. The rain held off and I'm going to thank Pastor Brad for that. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the many folks who joined us in the event, most memorably, a couple of people. The man who lives in Southmost and is a gardener who rides his cargo bike to work every day. He stopped to tell us thank you because his life is now much easier so that he can get to and from work more quickly and safely. The young mother who walked by while we were there, pushing a stroller in one hand and holding a toddler with the other. She said thank you because walking to and from her house is safer and much more fun for her kids. There was a retired BISD employee who Charlie knew and lived in Southmost his entire life that thanked us as well, as while he told me that he would be watching and helping in any way to protect the trail. And finally, the school principal who told us that kids that live under two miles from school cannot be bused and have to walk to school if they don't have a ride. The trail provides a safe way for his kids to get to school and he thanked us as well. So, thank you very much, staff, and look forward to enjoying the space.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? If not, Charlie, let's see.
If I can bootstrap on one last thing.
I'm sorry.
I just want to welcome Rose for another four years and Joel and Ben.
Sure.
We're going to accomplish great things the next two years and I've been honored to serve with Rose for two years. She's an amazing person. I mean, as you can see, she's accomplished a lot for our city. I mean, they speak for themselves. Joel and Ben, I know you guys are going to do a great job, so we welcome you and let's get working.
I think Jessica and I have done all right.
Thank you.
I'm just kidding.
I welcome you guys, two years ago.
I'm just kidding.
You guys welcomed me.
I know, and I'm just kidding.
And just to reiterate that, yes, welcome back Dr. Gowan and Commissioner Mungia and Commissioner, Judge, Attorney, whatever. He's got a lot of titles. I'm not really sure what to call him yet, but I can't wait to get really working on the city and make positive, great changes with you at my side.
Likewise. Thank you. Okay, Charlie, it's your turn. Presentation of the employee.
The presentation's Employee of the Month.
Mayor, members of the commission, as you know and for the benefit of our new commissioner, Judge needs pretty much up to par. We announce the employee of the month on a monthly basis and at the end of the year we select the employee of the year at our banquet. So, for June, please help us welcome Inosensio Garibay, the employee of the month for June. Inosensio works at the Public Works Department. He's been working with us since 1987. He began as a mechanic helper. He is now equipment operator at the Public Works Department. He does a lot of the heavy work on our streets and things like that. What distinguishes him and makes him so valuable to us is he has learned how to work on machinery. He has learned how to work on small machines and middle-sized equipment that he can help us fix them at all times. And he's also a great mentor for the people that are newly hired at Public Works. He trains them well. He does a lot of the unofficial training for us. And he's just a great employee and a great asset to the city and the Public Works Department. And for his years of service as well, he's been with us a good amount of time. We want to recognize him. Why do you take it out of the box? Shucks. We've got a toolbox for him, but there's a watch in here somewhere.
That's cute. That's good.
You should open it to make sure it is in there.
It might be something from Public Works. It's a trick.
I'm not much of a wordsayer, but don't have much to say. The only thing is, is that I'm very, very, very fortunate to work for the City of Brownsville and I give thanks to those who appreciate me having me around. And I also have something to say. I give thanks to Sarah White. She was the one who hired me in those days. She's not here. And I also give thanks to Cyril Hernandez and Mr. Soto. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations, Rose.
Next, we have the Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grants.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. First of all, much congratulations to our new commissioners and welcome back Commissioner Gowan. My name's Marina Solesy. I'm the Director for the Office of Grant Management and Community Development and tonight, Carla Mancha joins us, CEO for the Housing Authority for the City of Brownsville, also the HACB team, the Choice Neighborhood Buena Vida Liaisons, Chairman Sanfallo, and members from the Steering Committee are here joining us tonight. So, this month marks the completion of year one of a two-year planning award grant. Back in February 2016, the Housing Authority as the primary applicant and the City of Brownsville as a co-applicant, Aunt Camilo submitted a grant application to the Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant and we were notified in June that we were awarded the $500,000 planning grant. Brownsville is one of three communities in the state of Texas that has received this grant since its inception, the first in the U.S.-Mexico border to receive the HUD grant and there are three, there are currently 73 grantees in the nation that have been awarded the grant since its inception in 2010. The Choice Neighborhood Initiative takes a holistic approach and supports the locally-driven strategies to address distressed public housing through a comprehensive approach and transformation. And you will see that the focus on the, the different focus is the people, housing, and neighborhoods for this initiative. I want to take this time to applaud Carla and her team. They've done an outstanding job in taking the initiative and leadership and I will hand this to her.
Thank you, Marina, and thank you to you and your team for being such great partners. So, as Marina mentioned, the Housing Authority is the lead applicant for this project and I'd like to share with you, this is a page of our HACB 2020 strategic plan. The Board of Commissioners approved our 2020 strategic plan in August of 2015 and there are five goals that were identified. The first three goals, as you will see on this slide, Goal One, Housing; Goal Two, People; Goal Three, Communities, all coincide with the vision and the goals of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. The other two goals, the fourth goal addresses the growth, the professional growth of our employees, and then the fifth goal addresses capacity, the capacity of our Housing Authority and our commitment to address new developments and the rehabilitation of existing developments from a holistic point of view. In other words, it's not just about the brick and mortar, the unit, the voucher, it's about the family inside that unit and connecting that family to the resources and the tools to become self-sufficient and it's about community, that the Housing Authority needs to be an active, engaged partner in the community of Brownsville and leverage the assets that we have with the assets of our external stakeholders to increase the quality of life for the individuals in Brownsville. So, our vision is verbatim the Choice Neighborhood Initiative vision and I also like to state that our organizational structure also mirrors Choice Neighborhoods.
So, with this initiative, it is in line with the City of Brownsville's focus, which is to serve its residents and to improve the quality of life of its residents. More specifically, it also goes in line with the initiatives that we've taken place for community development in the efforts in focusing on our unique community needs and addressing those needs. We want to thank the mayor and the commissioners, city management, and the departments for being very supportive on this initiative and planning process.
So, our other partner in this endeavor is Camilo's LTD. Back prior to the NOFA being published in November of 2015, the Housing Authority Board Commissioners already had entered into a contract and partnered with Camilo's LTD since September of 2015 to be our planning coordinator. They are out of Chicago, Illinois, and they are a firm that specializes in planning and urban design. I also like to note that they were very successful in working with the Austin Housing Authority, the other one of three public housing authorities in Texas, to be a Choice Neighborhood community.
So, the two-year planning process started with the listening and learning. It kicked off in June of 2016. Then, we had our visioning month and we're currently in the strategies phase. The next steps are planned content to be submitted in the end of this month, the draft plan to be submitted to HUD for review in December of 2017, and the final plan will be due in June 2018 to HUD. And so, the focus as far as the, this initiative is the Buena Vida Neighborhood. It goes from 6th to 22nd Street and Madison to the frontage. And so, as you will see there, it's about 110 blocks. It includes two census tracts. It is a distressed area. Families face a lot of socioeconomic challenges. Just to highlight some of the demographics, median household income is 17,270 in the whole neighborhood and those that are 25 years and older who have an education of ninth grade or lower is about 42%. The individuals who are at poverty level based on their income within the last 12 months is at 59.8%. It is important to highlight that within this neighborhood, within this boundary, there's many assets that include social service organizations, government buildings, museums, and so forth. It's really important to focus on continuing to connect those services and assets to the community.
Okay, so like Marina mentioned, she described the boundaries of the Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood project. In order to even qualify and submit an application to HUD, you need to identify, you need to have a public housing development within the boundary that you identified in your application. So, with regards to our application, the anchor is the Buena Vida Public Housing Development. And you will see that the Buena Vida Housing Development is located between Ringgold and Tyler, 14th and 16th Street. It's 150 units built in 1940, 150 units comprised of also one, two, and three bedrooms and it basically sits, approximately sits on 13 acres. Now, in order for us to show that we have a competitive application, we needed to prove that the Buena Vida Public Housing Development is a distressed housing development. So, the Board of Commissioners contracted with an A&amp;E firm to perform a physical conditions assessment report to show that it would cost us more to rehab the existing development versus reconstructing new. And the number that they provided us, it would cost approximately $19 million to rehab the existing development. And of course, rehabbing does not address the size of the unit or the bedrooms and it did not address the configuration of the existing development. So, that's important to note. So, we were able to prove that it's a distressed housing and we were obviously very competitive and we were awarded one of 10 nationwide back in June of 2016. You will see from this next slide, some of the challenges that the Housing Authority has faced with regards to addressing the needs of the structure, but more importantly, the challenges that the families face on a daily basis living at Buena Vida. There are disconnected sidewalks, there are issues with poor storm water drainage at the property, poorly designed steps into the unit. None of the 150 units have central air and heat, which we all know that is something that is needed, especially during this time going into summer. And then, we also have, since it was built in 1940, you will have issues where we would need to go and, and address some of the problems with the restrooms or the different bathrooms or the kitchens. And we've had to address it from a Band-Aid perspective because it costs too much to rehab it completely and thoroughly. So, between the months of June and January, we listened and we learned from the residents there residing in Buena Vida. It is important to note that in order to produce a competitive and a thorough transformation plan for Buena Vida, we need to listen to the families who reside there. It's not about what we want to see, it's about what they are needing. So, the Housing Authority has had several community meetings throughout the months of June through January and even now, and we will continue until we submit the plan. We have formed and organized a steering committee made up of individuals representing different organizations in our community and we've also organized a Buena Vida liaison group, which members of the team are here now, and these are individuals who reside either in the Buena Vida Public Housing Development or in the surrounding area still within the boundary of Buena Vida. Listening and learning. So, this next slide, we asked the residents, what is it that they want to see with regards to physical improvements? And we did not only ask the adults, we also asked the children. Very important that the children be engaged and be part of the plan. And I'd like to point out that in one of the sessions that we asked the children what they wanted to see more of, they said they wanted to see more community gardens. And the adults said they wanted to see more walking trails, walkability, improve the walkability of the neighborhood. And I want to mention this because this goes to the leadership and it speaks towards the leadership of the City of Brownsville, so I commend you because the work that you're doing right now, know that it's impacting and influencing the families in Buena Vida. Again, listening and learning, but now with regards to social improvements, what is it that the families need in order to become self-sufficient? What is it that they feel that they, that we need to provide them more of? Arts and culture was very, it's very big and it's something that is very important to the families. Our partnership with the Carlotta Cape Trina and our support of the Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood Paper Orchestra is an example of an early action activity that has stemmed from the discussions from these meetings. In addition, the educational programs that we have with our reading group, our Art for the Heart for our Elderly, all of these different programs and projects is because of what the families are wanting to see and we are providing those choices for them. The next slide, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go through every single asset and challenge, the challenges that were identified as the five top, top five assets and top five challenges because of time, but I do want to point out under assets, the families saw that the arts and culture and bicycling and other outdoor recreation were the top two assets in our neighborhood and something they want to see more of and they want to, and they are asking us to build on. The challenges, the challenges are with vandalism and graffiti, reckless drivers, and pedestrian safety, going back to the walkability and the sidewalk improvements that the families are asking for. Now, I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to Marina.
So, the visioning month was kicked off in February and there were three different themes throughout this month. One was Un Pasado Enriquecer, Celebrando Historia Cultura, The Rich Past, and then the other theme was The Livable Present and then A Vibrant Future. So, within each week, there's several activities that were going on and celebrating those three themes and many of you participate in the events. We would like to thank you for that. So, just going through this quickly, for the visioning month, some of the highlights and celebrating the rich past was a kids' history collage, a kickoff fiesta, storytelling, interviews with the residents, and a neighborhood history presentation. And it's really important to note that one of the goals in developing the plan is to build on its history on Buena Vida and not to lose sight of the culture, traditional culture tradition and its rich history. And so, as the plan is being developed, we must be mindful that its strongest foundation, the history, that we don't lose track of that and ensure that there's a successful transformation. The next theme is The Livable Present and some of the highlights during those activities included a resident, neighborhood, and business survey. So, there were, there were surveys that were conducted at those three different levels. The Cocina Alegre was out there with the community kitchen presentations, the Edelstein Park, the activation of the park with the Build a Better Block that was very successful, and Charo Day's performances and parades. That was part of The Livable Present. And here, we have a picture of Edelstein Park. It's really excited that, exciting that that park has been activated and there's increased usage there. And in the event at the Edelstein during the month, there were over about 150 kids there, so that was really exciting to see. And they are our future of our community, which leads us to the next theme of A Vibrant Future. And so, as Carla mentioned, it's really important to include the children within this planning process. Some of the activities that took place for A Vibrant Future was future storytelling event, kids' design activity. They were there using the Monopoly models for the designs. It was a lot of fun and they were very, very creative. The redesigning of the Buena Vida meeting, steering committee discussion of the results of the designs, the HUD Choice Neighborhood convening in Washington took place during that week, and the ribbon cutting of the Choice Neighborhood Headquarters that's there on site. So, residents were asked what they would like to see in Buena Vida in the future and a word cloud was developed based on the responses. So, the greater the prominence, the word appeared, the larger you'll see it in the word cloud. So, as you can see, safety, wellness, and health infrastructure such as lighting and air conditioning are priorities there. And so, you will, in this slide, you'll see four different designs. So, throughout the several design meetings, including the kids' design, the community was asked to provide input of how they would like to see the specific public housing development. And the four different design themes that resulted from this was Community Campus, Four Villages, Central Park, and Sister Parks. And as you will notice, any theme, what's really important is green space for the community. It's also important to note that these designs, you'll, we will have at least 150 housing units or more, so that won't affect the number of housing units. And then, I will pass the baton to Carla.
And just to add a little bit to what Marina mentioned on Edelstein Park, the Housing Authority has made an intentional effort ever since November to have an activity at that park every month and the, and the goal is and the theme is to take our park back. And it has been so wonderful to see that the families are taking advantage of that beautiful park. And I've had discussions with families after hours and asking them, did you come to the park before? And they said, no, we didn't because it was dirty, it was, you know, bad activity here, but now we see a change. And we want to thank you for your support and especially for the support of the trail that's right next to that park because that, because that trail will connect Buena Vida to the other neighborhoods in the community. Now, moving on and also finalizing our presentation, we are right now in the strategies portion of our plan. Like Marina stated, it is a two-year process. We're one year into it. We are in the strategies portion, which is the working groups. So, we have identified five working groups based on what the families' voice that they needed. So, if it was education, it was health, it was security, we went ahead and we put together, we identified five working groups. They are Housing and Commercial Development, Health, Wellness, and Recreation, Neighborhood Identity, Arts and Culture, Education and Job Development, Safety and Circulation. So, we have met with every working group. We met with them last month. We're meeting with them in two weeks and then our third meeting will be in July. Once those meetings conclude, the leader of the, the group will then report to the Steering Committee and we will then make sure that the work and the findings and the suggestions and ideas that came out of these working groups will then be reflected in the transformation plan. So, thank you to all who are part of these working groups. Our next community meeting, and I invite everyone, it will be on June 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts. And I'd like to state that the Housing Authority submitted an application to EPA for their building blocks program. I believe we're one of 23 communities nationwide to be selected. So, now with the technical assistance that we are receiving from HUD to address the transformation of Buena Vida, we are now bringing in a second group of experts, which is EPA, to address equitable development and build on what we have already started with Choice. And again, layering it with Choice, addressing and focusing on Buena Vida. At this time, I would like to introduce Asonet Esquivel and I'd like for her to share with you her perspective as to what has been happening this past year with Choice. Asonet?
Buenas tardes, señor alcalde Tony Martinez y comisionados de la ciudad. Es un placer para nosotros estar aquí representando a Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood. Este, mi nombre es Asonet Esquivel y junto con mis compañeras somos elas es comunitarios. Estamos aquí para agradecer los recursos y esfuerzos que están... Estamos aquí para agradecer los recursos y esfuerzos que están invirtiendo en nuestra comunidad de Buena Vida. Nos da mucho gusto saber que, nos da mucho gusto ser parte de estas iniciativas que no se habían dado en nuestra colonia. Hemos visto inversiones que se han dado en el parque Edisto, donde ya tenemos wifi, donde muchas familias que no tienen acceso al internet, este, se están beneficiando, principalmente los niños que pueden hacer trabajos escolares que les piden en escuela. Algo muy nuevo para nosotros son los senderos de las bicicletas que estaban dañados y que ahora están siendo remodelados. Es una, que están construyendo, de hecho, cerca del parque. Nos están abriendo oportunidades de conexión tanto para el resto de la ciudad como para los niños que es un camino seguro para la escuela porque está cerca de la escuela y es la mejor manera de, de agordar camino. Y las conexiones no son, no solo son físicas, estamos viendo muchos cambios positivos que están impactando a las familias. Los impactos no solo son en la vivienda, también en la educación, en la salud, información importante, trabajos y muchos programas de apoyo para las familias especialmente para nuestros niños. Este, este proyecto del Plan de Choice Neighborhood sabemos que es posible gracias a las hermandades que nos, que se están formando entre las instituciones que les, que les importa el beneficio social de nuestra comunidad de Buena Vida. Estamos orgullosos de ser parte del Plan de Buena Vida Choice Neighborhood en donde el enfoque es impactar a la ciudad, a la ciudadanía e logísticamente y somos nosotros. La comunidad de los cuales decidimos que sea, necesita nuestra colonia Buena Vida. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Wow.
Thank you for your support and we look forward to further collaboration.
Thank you Carla and thank you all of you, y especialmente la gente que está aquí de la comunidad. Nos da mucho orgullo y mucho gusto que estén aquí, para eso estamos aquí para servir. Gracias.
Consent agenda items A through U?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearings, public hearing number five, public hearing on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1628, annexing territory to the city of Brownsville and extending the boundary limits and adopting a service plan.
Good evening, honorable mayors, city commissioners. This is a public hearing to consider an annexation petition filed by Acienda Lake View Incorporated. And just to give you a quick background, chapter 43 of the Texas Local Government Code is the one that sets out the legal requirements that we need to comply with in the process. And I'll be talking about the steps in the next couple of slides. And so here is the aerial of, of the location. The property, it's highlighted in red, and the, technically, the remaining of the property or most of the property is inside city limits. It's only this portion, right here. It's 1.25 acres that is being requested to be annexed into the city. And so as part of the requirements for the annexation proceedings, we are required to notify at least 30 days before the first public hearing each property owner as well as the entities that provide the services in the area. We are also required to advertise the notice on our city website as well as to post notice on a newspaper of general circulation. In terms of public hearings, we're required to conduct two public hearings to give all persons the opportunity to be heard and comment on the annexation. And hearings are very specific, they need to be completed, you know, at least 20 days, but not, not more than 40 days. And so it's very specific and we need to basically plot the timeline for, for the two hearings that are required. We're also required to, to prepare a service plan, that's the planning department responsibility. And so we are required to basically list and provide all the services that the city needs to now begin providing to this area after the annexation is, is in place. So some of the services that are included in this service plan are, you know, police protection, fire protection, medical services, and things of that nature. There's also a preclearance requirement after the, the annexation, if you decide to approve, we, we are required, or legal department is required to submit some voting information. And that's just to make sure that we're not doing any, you know, any violation of Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. And so just in, in short, this is, these are the annexation steps that need to be taken. We have already done the letters, we sent notices to the landowners and entities, and that happened in May. We already did the public notice and that was back in May 21st. And so today is the first public hearing. So the next step is the second public hearing, which will be on June the 20th, so that's the next city commission. And then after that, if there's no sort of opposition to the annexation, we'll place this annexation item or the ordinance as a consent item and for, for your approval on, on July 6th. And so after that, legal department will take care of the preclearance requirements. This is a public hearing, there's no action required, it's just so we can hear anyone that might have a...
Is this a public hearing? Does anybody here on behalf of this particular issue?
I have some question, I have a question. Um, this service plan, did it go through the legal department?
Yes, it did.
It doesn't have the stamp. And let me ask you, it says that it's valid for a period of 10 years. So, so the question is, if there's no improvements, we have to improve all the area, and then after 10 years, it, it, they unannex or how does it work? Because that's what this actually, this kind of, that's what this kind of makes it sound like it is.
I think that's just like an overall long-term plan. We are required to provide full services, not immediately, but within four years, four and a half years. So if the language, I mean, I will need to look at, look at that again and see if that's what's being conveyed. But it's just, it's just making a, basically a laundry list of services that need to be offered upon 90 days of being annexed.
Because usually what happens is somebody develops a subdivision, right? They put in the sidewalks, they put in the infrastructure?
Right.
And then we annex. So the question is here, if they haven't done those improvements, we're gonna have to pay for them.
The developers, the burden is still on the developer, even if we already annexed the area. And I think at the, at the bottom of that service plan, there's a section that says the developer is still responsible for providing any of those infrastructure improvements.
I think so.
So the city will now be required to do that.
We have a similar case on Charm.
Anyway, be sure and clarify all that for the city commission if you, if you don't mind, so that we, you know, those questions are all good questions and just verify them for us. But anybody else have any public comment? If not, entertain a motion to close public?
Motion to close?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next item?
Next item is public comment period, I don't want... Items for individual consideration, action item number seven, consideration and action to appoint a city commissioner to Paseo de la Resaca, Lightning and Landscaping Main's District Service Plan Board.
Mayor Commissioners, we know with the vacant position of Commissioner Portillo, we do need a commissioner to be representing on this board, and so we open it to your recommendation.
Okay, any volunteers?
I'll do it.
You do it, Rose? Okay. Uh, does anybody want to nominate her?
Commissioner Gowen, I was, I was gonna nominate Jessica, ma'am, for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm gonna tell you why. This is actually in her district. It was in her district and she's been wanting to participate. So I, I just didn't move quick enough, I was reviewing the agenda items, so I do apologize, I am really sorry.
I don't, I don't think Commissioner Gowen just got a lot on her plate.
That's totally fine.
Anyway, Jessica, we appreciate it.
I know you do a great job.
It's in her district and I know she's been wanting to get on, so I apologize.
Not a problem.
But you can, when I get...
Oh, you can help me. Motion to nominate Jessica.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item, consideration and action to appoint one city commissioner to serve on the Brownsville Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO Policy Committee.
I move to appoint Judge Ben Nies to the MPO.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carries. You, Mark, you now have your new MPO member and we'll see you, I think...
Who was nominated, I'm sorry?
Commissioner Nies.
Very good.
Okay.
I will send you some briefing materials in a day or two, and then we can set a time to, if you have, when you have questions.
I'll look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine.
Item number nine, consideration and action to appoint two members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissions, welcome. And we have two openings, and I believe we only have two applicants for our Parks Advisory Board.
Motion to appoint the two applicants that are there.
Second?
Thank you.
Item number 10, consideration and possible action...
I guess we have to vote on it.
We had to vote, yeah.
Sorry, they were handing me stuff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sorry. Item number 10.
Action item number 10, consideration and possible action regarding the city commission meetings for the remaining of the year.
Mayor Commissioners, we do, my city charter require to have a meeting at least once a month. It's the first Tuesday, so what I have up here to schedule. And I know at times we discuss about having during the summer, during June and July. So we look to make the motion or suggestion on how you want the calendar to look like for the end of the year. In June, we do have a June 6th, which is today, and June 20th. In July, we have July 11th, July 18th. And then for the month of August, we do have our budget meetings, which is pretty full. And then September, again, some of our budget meetings. So our tougher discussion is usually during July timeframe, and I know November, December, you do have a discussion. So how would you make a motion, do you want to do, leave the meetings as is? Or would you like to...
Now, where, where, where's our movement in July? It would be kind of nice to have a little bit of, of break in July.
Yeah, because you have your, you have your July, you have your July, this is your first meeting and this is your second meeting, July 11th, July 18th.
Okay, and how did we do it last year?
Last year, I believe we had both meetings. No, we had only one.
No, we had one.
No, we had one, we had, we had a little bit of a break before we went into the budget.
There was a couple of commissioners that went on holiday or vacation.
Yes, exactly.
Because, because we took all of our money that we get paid to do this thing, and we spent it all in one hour. No, okay.
So would you, recommendation to get rid of the, the second meeting in July? Is that what the...
Yeah, that'd be, if we can, if you can give us a break there, that would be nice.
How close, I'm sorry, how close does the November 21st meeting fall next to Thanksgiving? And not because we travel, but maybe because members of the public travel?
I want to say it's the same week of Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving is the...
Maybe we can move that so that more...
The 21st is Thanksgiving.
Yeah, if you could move it up a little bit on that one, maybe to the 7th and then the 14th.
Okay.
So that we can have some time there.
Yeah.
And then on December, the 19th, move it up to the seven days after the December the 5th, which would be on the 12th, Our Lady of Guadalupe.
So that the recommendation is to eliminate the July 18th meeting and then just move November 21st up to the 14th and December to the 12th.
And if we could advertise on Channel 12?
Oh, yes.
Just to make sure that the public is aware that we shuffled the schedule to accommodate them being in town.
We can do that, Commissioner.
Can you, Michael, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat the December thing?
Yes, so it'd be, it'd be November...
To the 12th, okay.
November 7th to 14th and December 5th and December 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Those would be the meetings, regular meetings, and we'll post appropriately.
Okay.
So we just make a motion to accept this.
And so that would be, if I could hear a motion of that effect?
Motion to do that.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mayor Commissioner, just, I would end that, I know you received the email that Crisella has taken over now as, this is my last meeting as city secretary, and I can go start doing the other hat I have on.
Do we have to have a going away party?
I think we do, I think we can go away, but Crisella was, as, will be the city secretary from now on.
Okay, great, thank you, congratulations. All right, item number 11.
Action item number 11, consideration and action to approve the city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro, Be Metro, revised ADA policies and procedures manual, complimentary paratransit service plan.
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners, newly, newly elected commissioners, congratulations. Brownsville Metro is, is requesting city commission approval to the revisions to its ADA policies and procedures, complimentary paratransit service plan as governed to comply with the requirements under the Americans with Disability Act of 1990. There were three revisions based on the Texas Department of Transportation compliance review, the following areas were identified. Number one was non-discrimination under 49 CFR 37.5 and 37.59. Number two, reasonable modification under 49 CFR 37.169 and FTA C 47 10.1 of the general regulations. Brownsville Metro is requesting approval of these revisions to our plan.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number 12.
Consideration and action on resolution number 2017-033, expressing support for a steel manufacturing opportunity to be located at the Port of Brownsville, also known as Project America.
Mayor Commissioners, this is an item, a resolution in support of this project, Project America. I'm just gonna, Eddie Campirano and Commissioner Wood are here to answer any questions. I'm gonna go down a list of all other agencies that have supported or passed a resolution so that, so that you could know. Lone Star National Bank, Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, Los Fresnos Chamber, City of Los Fresnos, Harlingen EDC, Salpadre EDC, City of Wesaco, Town of Rancho Viejo, City of Salpadre, Mission EDC, the Brownsville Chamber, the SBI Chamber, McAllen EDC, the Port Isabel Chamber, the Brownsville EDC, and Texas Southmost College. I believe they're working on other resolutions. And a little bit about Project America, it's a one and a half billion dollar steel mill, LEED certified steel mill. And I will pass it over to Eddie or Commissioner Wood if there are any questions at this time.
No, I, I, I did, I did my homework on this one, and being LEED certified is a pretty amazing accomplishment, especially for someone like me who's a environmental lawyer. So, you know, it, it, it has some, some merit to it, it really does. But again, I, they, they asked me to, to see if I could write a letter, I told them that the commission is the one that has to do it on, in its entirety, of course. Any, any questions from either, for John Wood, Commissioner, nice to have you here, Port Director?
So, we need a, nice to have you.
Nice to have you both here. Any other, any questions? Now entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, best of luck, let us know, okay?
Thank you.
Action item number 13, consideration and action to acknowledge the city's comprehensive annual financial report and single audit report for fiscal year ended September 30th of 2016.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is Lupita, and I'm the finance director. I would like to introduce Carlos Barrera, partner with Carl, excuse me, Car, Car Riggs and Ingram with the CPA firm, to introduce this item.
Now, now, tell me again, who are they with? I'm just kidding.
I'll go through that, I'll go through that in a little while. Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, and new members of the commission, welcome and congratulations to you all. I just want to take a few minutes of your time, and I know you have a consent, a fairly long agenda, and so I know how that can be, I've been where you've been. But I want to go over your, the major highlights of the comprehensive annual report, which you have there, and I just, would just like to touch on so few, a few of the, of the items. Your report is about 263 pages, it's cut down to about 15 pages from last year, so we're becoming a little bit more efficient in regards to how this thing's presented. It's divided into several sections, as noted in the table of contents, and it's submitted to the, to the Governmental Financial Officers Association, known as GFOA, for a certificate of achievement award, and the copy of that certificate is on page 15. It's been over 30 some odd years consecutively that you all have, have achieved this, which is a pretty, pretty strong feat. As members of the commission, you are obviously aware that the ultimate responsibility of the financial statements are yours, and it lies with you. So to kind of give you an over, overview of something in a very short period of time, that's what I'm, I'm trying to do here and will do. So in effect, what I would recommend that you all do is read, beginning on page 23, the management discussion and analysis. That will give you a summary in much simpler language about last year's financial history, and it'll incorporate much of what I will include in, what is included in the entire report. So that's your bedtime homework, I guess. The financial statements themselves begin on page 45 and incorporate the footnotes which go into greater detail about certain aspects of the financial report, such as the breakdown of your fixed assets, your notes payable, et cetera, and also definitions of terms and policies. So rather than to go through all that, let me just tell you and summarize for you what you did last fiscal year and how you did, and where you stood at September 30th, which was the close of your, of, of last year. Since the city operates under a fund accounting system for the purposes of my presentation, I will only concentrate on the general fund, however, keep in mind that the city has a little over 47 funds. And so that's, that's pretty big, and they're all integral to the overall operations of the city. The revenues of the general fund this year, or this last year totaled $105.6 million, and that's about 2.7 over last year. The two largest components of revenue were property taxes of about $27.4 million and sales taxes. four million, and sales taxes of twenty-seven point nine million. Overall, your actual revenues exceeded your budgeted revenues by over five point four million, and almost forty percent of that was of the surplus funds that you received from Brownsville Public Utilities. The expenditures of the general fund totaled ninety-seven point six million, and it's about a million and a half more than in two thousand and fifteen. But increases in expenditures were in the areas of public safety and culture and recreation and capital outlay. However, in comparison to what you had budgeted, your expenditures were about five point one less than the ninety-seven, well, you actually hit ninety-seven point six million, you had budgeted one point two point eight. So in effect, you had a fairly large favorable variance in virtually almost every area of expenditures. After transfers to and from other funds, the general fund increased by slightly over three point two, to twenty-five million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and your budgeted, your budget had anticipated a six point seven million dollar reduction. So your final variance was, with budget, stood at over ten point six, or ten million dollars in the favorable column. The city's goal is to maintain an unassigned minimum fund balance of about fifteen percent of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out. Based upon your fifteen, sixteen results, that percentage was approximately twenty point twenty-three, which is the largest percentage achieved by the city in recent times. Measured the same way, total general fund balance also hit a high of twenty-eight point twelve percent, and this fiscal year, the city is budgeting twenty-eight point nine three percent. The city's overall efforts in revenue enhancement, as well as cost containment, has resulted in steady increases in the overall, in unassigned fund balances, thereby allowing the city to reach and maintain its goal. The city has continued to strengthen itself financially and provide its citizens with services in the most financially efficient means possible. The result of our financial audit was an unmodified opinion, which is found on pages nineteen through twenty-one. An unmodified opinion is a clean opinion, and is what you hope for after we finish our work. In addition, there's also the compliance audit work we performed on your state and federal monies that you received. That section of the report is tabbed "Single Audit Section," it's near the back, and it begins on page two forty-nine. Again, we are happy to say that you have a clean report on this section, as we did not encounter any issues or findings or question costs with your expenditure of state and federal funds. Overall, we had a good, clean, and efficient audit, as we did last year, and it would not have been possible without the assistance of your accounting personnel, especially Lupita Ronaldo and his staff, as well as your internal auditors, who gave us tremendous assistance in the completion of this report. And I also want to thank the city for allowing us an extra month to complete it. This is the first time it's happened in my tenure. As you may or may not be aware, and Lupita was trying to say the new firm name, but my old firm of Long Chilton, we've been around for sixty-six years, and that is older than I am, but is no longer around. It merged. We were, we were asked by a national firm to merge with them, which we were found very, we were very pleased with that, because obviously when you merge with a national firm, there must be something there they liked, so I hope that's what it was. But anyway, we did merge with them. But I will tell you, as with any merger, learning the new ways of doing things is fairly complicated and difficult, and as a result, it was a pretty big stress to all my staff. So we had asked the city back in March to ask the GFOA for a thirty-day extension, because by the time we did our work and then all the review processes now that we have to go through, to ensure that the report is accurate and good, it takes time, and that's what happened. But we managed to get through it, and I am grateful for receiving this, just that little bit more time to complete our work. And of course, I am very grateful to all of you for giving us the opportunity to do the work. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them, but if not, have a nice meeting.
Thank you, Carlos, appreciate it. Anybody have any questions? If not, good luck on your new firm.
Thank you very much.
Item number fourteen.
We need to acknowledge the report.
I'd like to move to acknowledge their...
I'm sorry, that's got, we gotta have an action item on item number thirteen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to acknowledge.
Or to acknowledge?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen.
Consideration and action on the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation project funding for the Brownsville Sports Park Field Improvement Project.
Good evening, how are you all doing?
Good.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having us. My name is Tino Villarreal, I'm the Chair of BCIC, and we are asking to transfer funds over to the city for the purchase of a, renovating the sports park field turf. And we have gone through our sixty-day public comment period, we have gone through, taken all the necessary steps, and our board has approved that, but now we're coming to you to, for, seeking your approval for the transfer of funds, so that the city can purchase a new turfing facility, field for the citizens of Brownsville, and those who utilize that turf that has been standing there for eight and a half years, and I think is due for...
And before we do take a vote, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate it. I know it takes a lot of time.
Well, it does, but, you know, I'm a proud citizen of Brownsville, and you guys make me proud to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys, any, any comment on this one? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, removal, and installation of the monofilament synthetic turf system, including all markings, inlays, including sand and rubber with maintenance and equipment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. So this is consideration to, for the purchase, delivery, removal, and installation of the Shaw Sports Turf Powerblade Pro two point two five monofilament synthetic turf system. It's a very fancy way of saying AstroTurf, including all markings, inlays, the sand, rubber, with the maintenance and equipment included, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five. The GP four three eighty regulation size football soccer goalpost, in the amount of forty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one. Print logos, center and end zones at forty-two thousand, and the total amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and six, Tabaragon Sports Constructors out of Fort Worth, Texas, via the inter-local agreement of buy board, of which we did do three buy board quotes and presentations, which were received and considered.
So the difference between the old turf and this turf is now this turf is gonna be regulation...
It will be regulation size, that is correct.
So now we can have UIL?
Correct.
Oh, that's, that's...
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Item number sixteen.
Consideration and action to award a contract for the historic resources survey of all historical neighborhoods in Brownsville, an application to the National Register of Historic Places.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Historic resources surveys provide a means by which we identify and document historic resources in our area and evaluate their significance. Through this contract, the proposed historic resources survey will serve as an update to our current inventory of historic commercial and residential buildings. The last survey that was conducted, I apologize, the last survey that was conducted was in the year two thousand, and a survey updated is needed in order to comply with the Texas Historical Commission, which requires periodic updates. Assess the current conditions of historic properties that were identified in the two thousand survey. Identify properties that may be eligible for listing, which include buildings built before nineteen sixty-seven. And lastly, after the survey is updated, an area within the survey boundaries with potential to become a national historic district will be identified, and an application will subsequently be submitted to the National Register of Historic Places for a national historic district designation. So historic districts have been proven to provide cultural, economic, and environmental benefits. For example, it will facilitate the process for property owners to obtain federal and state historic tax credits to rehabilitate their buildings. The historic resources survey will encompass the historic neighborhoods identified in the map, which include downtown Brownsville, Buena Vida, Los Ebonos, and West Brownsville. Staff recommends to award this contract in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to Hardy Heckmore. An RFP was released, an RFP committee was formed, and that was the firm that was selected. I will have you to be answered, any questions?
Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much, good luck. Item number seventeen.
Consideration and action on resolution number twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty, to execute an advanced funding agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Texas Department of Transportation regarding the Southmost Nature Trail, Manzano Street to La Posada Drive.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Commission. I'm here to talk about resolution number twenty-seventeen dash thirty. This resolution is to support the Southmost Nature Trail Phase Two. There's a typo in this, it's a point eight mile section, not a one point eight mile section, and it's from Manzano Street at the termination of the Southmost Public Library to La Posada Drive, right near the Monizuma Cypress Preserve and the Oljagu Bridge. So the city of Brownsville received three hundred and seventy-five thousand in category seven funds, which are metropolitan mobility and rehabilitation funds, for construction and construction engineering for Phase Two of the Southmost Nature Trail. To make use of these federal funds, the governing body of the local government must enter an advanced funding agreement by resolution. And so today, we bring forth the resolution for your consideration.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eighteen.
Consideration and action to adopt resolution number twenty-seventeen dash zero thirty-two, authorizing the sale of the premises located at twelve fifty-four East Monroe Street, Brownsville, Texas, to the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, designating signatories for the purchase and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. Commissioner Gao, welcome back, and the new Members of the Commission, welcome. This resolution is a short resolution authorizing the sale of the premises located at twelve fifty-four East Monroe, and this is to acknowledge or give permission to sell to the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, and granting the city manager, deputy city manager, or assistant city manager, the authority to execute in necessary documents to close a transaction.
Ms. Minor, how do we come about these homes? How do we...
Well, this particular home was deeded to the city back in two thousand and five through a nominal fee of ten dollars. So now we have an opportunity to sell this for, to provide a little bit more of an affordable housing for our residents.
And if I understand, the CDVG, the CDCB will actually rehabilitate the home and restore it?
That's correct.
And then sell it at, I mean, they actually provided the financing and everything, right?
They were either sell it or provide it for a rental opportunity. That's correct.
Okay, no, it's, it's an interesting, interesting, yeah. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen, thank you, Connie.
Consideration and action to award a contract for server and storage systems for the Brownsville Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, congratulations. We're asking for your approval to allow us to enter an agreement with Pinnacle Business Systems for the purchase of two backup servers, to include hardware, software installation, and warranty of five years. These servers would be, would protect data that includes records management, dispatch information, JIO-related information, videos, et cetera. An evaluation committee consisting of police IT personnel and MIS are recommending Pinnacle, and in the amount of the aforementioned, it would be two hundred and eighteen thousand, one fifty-three point six one, and would be funded through two thousand and sixteen CO eight zero one three one one eight five two zero one five, and we respectfully request that you authorize this purchase.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, consideration and action to approve the purchase of a new model twenty-seventeen John Deere three fifty long-reach excavator for the city of Brownsville Public Works Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission, welcome to the new commission. My name is Martino Derio, Public Works Superintendent. The department is recommending approval to proceed with the purchase of a twenty-seventeen John Deere excavator. It will be assigned to the Drainage and Air Maintenance Division. It's a specialized machine equipped with a sixty-foot extension boom, used for projects involving sediment removal from drainage canals, dredging remediation, and deep excavation work. It will replace the four eighteen six sixty-nine, which has surpassed industry standard life expectancy, is unreliable, and too costly for the city to maintain. Through the specifications provided by Public Works, city purchasing was able to obtain a buy board quote, and this satisfies all procurement requirements. Funding is in place in twenty seventeen PPF CO funds.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number twenty-one, consideration and action to approve the purchase of three new twenty-seventeen two thousand gallon water trucks for the city of Brownsville Public Works Department.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, the department is also recommending proceeding with purchase of three new twenty-seventeen Freightliner East two thousand gallon water tank trucks from Freightliner of Austin, of Austin, Texas, in the total amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, ninety-three dollars, using buy board contract number five twenty-one dash sixteen. The trucks will be used for compaction, irrigation, dust control, fire prevention during construction projects. The new water trucks will serve as replacements for the existing units. City purchasing was able to assist in obtaining a buy board quote, which satisfied all legal procurement requirements, and the department consulted with finance and funding for this purchase will be derived from twenty seventeen PPF CO funds.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's a lot of equipment there, some, don't they? Okay, keep, keep going, I think you've got one more.
Item number twenty-two.
Start making those streets.
Consideration and action to approve the purchase of a new model twenty-seventeen CAT three hundred and thirty-six hydraulic excavator for the city of Brownsville Public Works Department.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, again, the department is recommending approval to proceed with the purchase of one new twenty-seventeen CAT three thirty-six hydraulic excavator from Hope Cat this time, of Edinburgh, Texas, in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-nine cents, using buy board contract five fifteen dash one six. The truck excavator will be, is a versatile machine used for mining, construction, ditch, and road maintenance projects. It will replace the four eighteen four one nine existing machine. The buy board satisfies all procurement requirements. The included in the quote is a four-year, ten-thousand-hour powertrain and hydraulics warranty option. The department has consulted with finance and there's funding for this.
I'm looking at the machine, and that's like a hardcore caterpillar, right? So that would be used for like hurricane preparedness with ditches and stuff like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Cleaning other dishes.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number twenty-two, consideration and action to, I'm sorry. Item number twenty-three, consideration and action regarding the guidelines for broadcasting of the city's public comment period.
Mayor Commissioners, this is something that I think we've been discussing at one point or another, everybody's toyed with the idea, and we wanted to put something on the agenda to give Mark some guidelines, so we could actually start drafting policy for our public comment. The public comment, as you are well aware, it's just not broadcasted live, even though it happens here, we don't broadcast it live, and we want to actually be able to do so. We understand that in the past, we've had citizens who come and speak on issues that don't relate to city business. And considering that it is a limited public forum, that is, has to be related to city purposes, we want to create a policy where maybe somebody has to kind, come sign up before the meeting, and actually write what they're going to speak about, and it has to be related to city issue. And because in the past, I know people have come up, and they just start complaining about things that have no bearing to city business. So we want to be able to limit it with a certain policy, because we want to be able to broadcast it, because I think it's in the best interest of democracy.
And I would agree to that, and to say that, you know, as a twelve-year-old, you know, I saw the meeting on TV, and I saw constituents coming up to the podium and
I saw the meeting on TV, and I saw constituents coming up to the podium and speaking, and that was what sparked my interest in city government, is that people actually had a say in what happens, and what you can control, and what you can be a part of. So, I am definitely a very strong advocate for our public having, that it be broadcast, that anybody can come to us if they need something, and we are here to address it. And I absolutely agree with Commissioner Delion that we have to stay on city business topic and use this podium as a pillar of strength to our city, and so I absolutely support your idea with that.
I have a comment, and I'm not going to object to it, however, I think there should be policies. Having been a commissioner both on TV and not on TV with public comment, I can tell you firsthand that when the TV was running, the spots were monopolized by a very small number of people, and the podium became their platform from which to perform. And since the TV was turned off, I have seen children, Boy Scouts, adults, people that are young, people that are old, a vast variety of people that for some reason feel more free or more comfortable coming up to speak before us. So, I don't think that the policy should just be about city business, I think there should be some safeguards in the policy to prevent it from reverting to what it was before.
I agree. Okay, I, go ahead, Ben.
One of the items, consideration is to, if somebody spoke at the last meeting, and someone new is here to speak again, then we want to give everyone a chance to be able to speak. So, you know, it's a limited time, 15 minutes, but, so we'd like to have people that have spoke the week before on deck, so to speak, or on standby, and let new people continue to come and approach the commission.
You know, I'm all for transparency, and I'm all for the freedom of speech, you know, I mean, again, the difference was that there's a, you know, there's a right to freedom of speech, but there's not, you know, the right to have it televised. But what I'd like to do is, I'll entertain a motion to look at the guidelines, which is what you're talking about, and again, I'm all for that. I think this is a wonderful city commission who's got a lot of responsibility, and so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Go ahead, no, you go ahead first.
If I may, Mayor, I mean, there's large cities like San Antonio, Houston, Austin, and really what we want is, I kind of started researching San Antonio, and they actually go, they require like a 24-hour registration period, they require an address, so we know, you know, it's going to be related to something that has to do with the city. And like Rose was saying, Boy Scouts, but you're not here to complain about something that's really totally off-topic, you know?
We would hope that the community wouldn't abuse the privilege.
Abuse the privilege.
So, we want to be transparent and open, and we would expect the citizens to respect the decorum of the commission.
I have full confidence, I mean, I've been around for just a little while, and I'm really impressed. So, can we have a motion? I was going to suggest to the commission that I could have something drafted by the next meeting, maybe get it to you early next week. Wait just a second, I have to have a motion to approve.
I was just going to add that of all of the tools that we have in our toolbox, our television and communication is one of the strongest that we have, and to open this up and to allow the public to be a part of this commission, and to use the television aspect of it is very powerful, so we need to figure out a way that we can use it wisely. And so, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, go ahead, a second.
To open.
We need to make a motion to reinstate televised public comment subject to the guidelines that are going to be developed.
Okay. So, don't we have to vote on the guidelines before, agree on the guidelines before we vote to reinstate the television?
I would suggest, and I understand. Yeah, because I tell you what, Ben, look at the language, it says, "Action Regarding the Guidelines for Broadcasting." Okay, so we have to have a motion regarding the guidelines, so we have, let's have a motion for the council to provide us with some guidelines.
Motion to advise council to help draft guidelines, and to come back to the commission for approval, to present for the next meeting for approval.
Okay, so that initiates that action.
Of televised public comment.
Of televised public comment, yeah.
Okay. And there's your second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, I generally have Commissioner Onguilla tells me to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.